Mr. Dehaney, we have some presentations today.
Yes, we do, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council. At this time, at the request of several members of city council, we'll get a presentation on Zero Waste Awareness Week from our Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members. Mayor, I almost gave him a promotion, demotion? Mayor Dehaney? No, City Manager Dehaney. City Attorney, I know, which is it? City Attorney Stiles, thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Kristi Rhines. I am the city's liaison for the Clean Community Commission. I'm also your recycling coordinator, and I work over at Waste Management. To my left here is our Chair, Maury Hill. And to my right is our Vice Chair, Teri Stevens. We're going to run through a few presentations. I'm going to kick us off real quick. So, a little bit about the Clean Community Commission. It was formed in 1980 to promote litter prevention, recycling beautification, and general environmental awareness. As you can see, we do have a very clear mission when it goes in line with litter prevention, environmental stewardship. You all have little bags on your desk today. Just to kind of remind you all and everybody that how we can minimize waste by reusable items. To give you an idea about how much waste Waste Management collects every year, this is our FY 2024 tonnage. In total, we collected 168,495 tons of waste. That equates to almost about 3,000 pounds per house per year. And out of that, 22,000 tons was recyclables. So with that, I'm going to pass this off to somebody else. I'm going to go to the clicker.
Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for having us here today. In 2023, the Virginia Beach City Council signed a resolution on the recommendation of the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission that recognizes the first full week of September as Zero Waste Awareness Week. So we are in that week right now. During Zero Waste Awareness Week, the city highlights all the ways that residents can work towards a zero-waste lifestyle. Less waste in our landfills translates to a decrease in costs for managing this waste. Simply put, zero waste means producing little or no waste. Zero waste is the process of eliminating reusable or repairable materials from ending up in the landfill. It encourages manufacturers, municipalities, and consumers to evaluate their current consumption patterns and minimize those single-use items. To divert materials from the landfill, we must all share in the responsibility of producing and consuming sustainable products while limiting our use of disposable items. It involves all of our citizens being more mindful before they throw something in the trash. Some of our 2024 zero-waste initiatives include distributing reusable grocery totes to citizens. We'll be starting that tonight at city council at the formal session. Social media and print media outreach and education, and education campaigns that encourage residents to recycle right. We are encouraging citizens to visit the City of Virginia Beach Waste Management Facebook page to learn more about easy swaps that they can make today towards zero waste, and to also share them on their social media platforms. You can see in the last slide the start of the social media campaign. And I want to personally thank our staff liaison, Kristi Rhines, for producing our social media campaign. She's been amazing. She's done an amazing job as our liaison. And her enthusiasm regarding zero-waste initiatives is just wonderful to see.
Good day, city council.
Pleasure to be here in front of you. So, the question is, how do you get there? Well, on the first slide, you can see, talk about reduce and reuse. Also, refuse. You buy less, you use less. The important part of waste reduction is using these natural resources widely and avoiding the use particularly of single-use products that just get tossed in the landfill. Think of the plastic utensils you get when you go take out. It's automatically put in. Why? Out of habit? Sometimes it's up to educating the restaurant about, hey, you know, maybe you don't need to put those in because they're just going to go home and use the utensils they have. Or for the customer to say, I don't need that. Or when you go online, sometimes there's an option to say, I don't need that. So you have things like reusable bottles, mugs, again, utensils, straws, and bags. You can also cut down on yard waste by mulching or composting, which we'll talk on a later slide. And this is all about investing. It's investing sometimes a few dollars in reusable and durable products. And this will decrease the need for new ones. We're going to talk about recycling to end, but upfront, it's about decreasing the need. Keep resources from entering the waste stream and allow products to be used to their fullest extent. Always the question is, do I need to throw this away? What can I do with it? Well, another way of doing this is to repair something. Can you mend it? A broken item that's malfunctioning, that you normally would recycle? Practical solutions to repair items. You know, when I was growing up, I wish I had all these things on YouTube about how to do this and how to do that, all these ideas. Now it's out there. And I've noticed, you know, because my son's in his early 30s. A lot of his group, that's what they use. They do a lot of this and looking at ways to repair items. And they go on YouTube. There's just a wealth of information on the internet to do such. But it's not only good for the environment. In many instances, it can save money. Another way is to repurpose or donate. Transforming something, transforming the value of items, I should say, by turning them into other useful items. I've got a bunch of spare wood sitting around at home. I have it. I just, I don't hate to throw it into the landfill. You never know when there's a small project or someone, your neighbor needs it, where you can cut it, reuse it, build something in your garden, whatever, with it, as opposed to putting it in the landfill. Also, as far as donations go, obviously, there's a lot of areas like Goodwill and other businesses that will take these products, especially in good and workable conditions. And then they redistribute the goods to the product. Again, all these things we've talked about keeps from going into the landfill, keeps from going into your garbage can. And that's the whole idea. And then finally, and the one that we talk about the most at times is recycling, but that's at the end. Remember, we started with refusing. So we don't have these items. Reusing, repurposing. The last thing we want to do or can do is recycle. However, sometimes that's where we get to. And it's the last step in this process. Recycling, I should say, saves natural resources. It reduces the amount of waste in landfills. Again, saving energy, preventing pollution, creates jobs. You know, you see the items that we recycle here in the city? Aluminum. Aluminum is one of the best things to recycle because it can be recycled over and over and over again. And it can be back in the system in about 60 days. Sometimes, some items can be recycled. It's based on contracts we have with our people that take these products. Some items can't be. And those items that can't be recycled, that's where you go back and look at repurposing. Can they be donated somehow? Again, at the end, you have recycling. All these ways, trying to keep it out of the garbage can. The average household, as it says on the slide, produces 650 pounds of organic trash a year. More food reaches landfill than any other single material. 24% of there. That's a lot. So now the idea is, can you compost at home? Using food scraps from your kitchen, the dry leaves and wooden material from your yard? Reduce your trash by maybe 50%. Now, composting, that's a, I admit, that's a challenging topic. You know, you have to have an area dedicated. Got to be kind of committed. Takes time. Results, sometimes it takes a while for all that material to sort of marinate and get to something you can use. It does take time. However, doesn't mean that you can't take a small step. Coffee drinkers? What do you do with your coffee grounds? Easy, just filter, into the garbage can. Out in the yard, out under your zelias, hydrangeas. It's good for the soil, good for... Now, that doesn't seem like much. One step, one small step to keep the ball moving forward towards zero waste. I do it. The mayor does it. Kristi does it. Audience out here does it, the coffee drinkers. It starts adding up over a day, a month, a year. That's a lot of coffee grounds. And it goes back into the environment for a useful purpose. You start there, and then you add something later. And finally, yard waste. Waste management is supposed to dispose of 15,000-plus pounds of yard waste. And we're talking about the bags that are set out on the curb in your neighborhood. My day's Thursday, I look down the street. Oh, a bunch of bags, especially at different times of the year. It's more prevalent than others. Not so much in the winter. Ways to do this? Mulch mow, or just mowing your lawn and not bagging the clippings. I used to do that. Stopped. As my brother once told me, who, he was a greenskeeper for 40 years in the city. If you're a golfer, do you ever see them bag when they mow the fairways and the roughs? They don't. They just let it go back into the soil for the nutrients. You can do the same thing in your yard. What's the difference? There can always be a few exceptions. One of the key things to do that and doing that is got to keep your yard kind of mowed regularly. Obviously, if it gets real high and you got those clumps of grass, yeah, I get that. That's not a good look because you don't want your neighbors talking about you. But even if you bag them, you can put them maybe back into your yard. You can compost the yard clippings. And then finally, the woody debris when you're chopping up limbs and things. We have a storm roll through. You see a lot of that, or high winds. They can go to the city's landfill where it can be mulched and used throughout the city. Have you surprised at the number of people who thought, oh, those bags, don't they just put that in the, they compost them, or they do something with them? And put them out for mulch? No, they go into the landfill. And someone told me, yeah, I always wondered what they did with those plastic bags? How they got those out? I said, well, they don't. They don't. So, just reducing, again, I can't eliminate. It takes a long time. We didn't start the process overnight. We're not going to end it overnight. We're just starting to reduce that item. Again, reduce the tonnage, save the city some money. Are there any questions for the council?
Hey, Michael, and then Barbara, and Jennifer.
First. I'd like to...
You're quick.
Thank you both for being here. It's so good to see both of you. And I also want to acknowledge Sandra Chin and Barbara from the Clean Community Commission as well, and all the other members who are here, who I may not know by name. I do have a question. I have two questions. I'm going to start with the one that I have my page up to now, yard waste. Because I think a lot of what you're talking about has additional positive benefits, such as particularly in District 3, a lot of yard waste is disposed of through the city stormwater sewer system, which really causes encumbrances in the system's efficiency and effectiveness. And I just really want to kind of emphasize. I'm just curious how much of that you're seeing, but also just emphasize the importance of using yard waste in a way, as you said, that can improve soil quality and create mulch in a more responsible manner. It's one of the most substantial challenges we have as we're investing millions upon hundreds of millions of dollars in new stormwater systems. And then people dispose of their grass clippings down the sewer. It really causes harm to the system and to our community more broadly. So I'm just curious how much of that you're seeing and if there's anything that we could do to address that more visibly.
That's a good point. I see it, you know, just anecdotally, what I see out there. I do see it some only because we have these blowers. It's just easy to blow, and you just, instead of having to pick it up, yeah, you just blow it into the storm. Yeah, it's not that much, so what? But as you pointed out, it can be a big problem. Specifically, I mean, we haven't really, that hasn't really come up a lot as a topic. I'm glad you raised it. It's certainly something we can add into our information, especially as we go out and talk with the public in the future. And we bring up this idea of yard waste as, hey, don't blow it down either. Just like the old thing, don't put your plastic bags in a blue container. Well, please don't blow your yard waste. If you're going to bag it, or if you're mulching it, and I know, you know, it gets over the curb and whatever, please don't blow it down, you know, pick it up or do something.
I see it every day. I see it every day, Mr. Hill.
I know.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Berluci.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, well, and then I have one more question, but, yeah, please.
Mr. Berluci, we get it still quite a bit. I think it's one of the huge, our council helped us in wanting to create the back, the back truck. So basically, they go around the neighborhood. Their job is to clean the stormwater drains as well. And also, a combination with the on-street use contract. That helps a lot as well, but we still get a good amount of that.
Actually, going to the system. But we do have tools now that help us to remediate it. I'm not going to add anything to that.
Actually, it's a great question. You know, obviously, we all see it, just like Maury just described. You know, people with blowers, or they, you know, mow out into the roadway, and then they don't sweep it up when they're done. There is a city code that's on the books that, you know, pertains to that. As part of Ask HR Green, which is HRPDC, we also have a campaign. It's called Only Rain Down the Drain. And so you'll usually see public utilities promoting that, public utility stormwater promoting that. You're welcome.
It really degrades the impactfulness of our stormwater system. And I also think it highlights the point that...
You know, good environmental stewardship and responsive, responsible behavior has so many positive benefits, including the mitigation of the stormwater risk in addition to keeping our city clean and beautiful. The other question I have really is around recycling. It's just an ongoing issue and question. And I wonder if you have any additional thoughts about it. It's raising awareness about what can be recycled, and what you touched on that. But how can we get that word out better?
I have one thing. So one thing I did know, and one thing I did know when I'm on the Clean Community Commission, is that every blue can in our city is embossed with what you can put in that trash can. I had no idea. But if you look closely, you can see it. And it will tell you what you can go in there. And then, of course, Kristi in Waste Management is doing a great job as far as getting out social media. And I believe that the Recycle Right campaign will also help with education on what can be recycled and recycling correctly. But I'll have to turn it over to Kristi or Maury.
Just to back end of this, and you'll see more of it in the coming months. One of the things that we're working with through Ask HR, Ask HR Green and HRPDC, all the same, is they did get an EPA grant. So what's going to be moving forward probably next year is a Flip the Lid campaign, which we, you know, have been wanting to do. Some other cities have done this, which is where, you know, we have select neighborhoods that we focus on. And then that way, what we do is the lid is opened. It's just a visual of what's in there. But of course, a big marketing campaign hits the streets before that because we don't want to flip open a lid and find garden hoses and trash bags and things like that in there. We want everybody to do the right thing because it's what's important for us as far as what is recyclable. It keeps that recycling waste stream very clean, which is extremely important, as you all probably are aware of how sometimes, you know, just trash ends up in that recycling container. So, yeah.
It's very, it happens very often.
It does.
And it's one of the, and I've been with TFC, and I've flipped a few lids, and it's amazing what you find in there.
And it's habits.
We're all guilty of it to some degree, about either not knowing what to put in there, or you run out of room, and those things, those things happen. But as we continue to face the challenges that we do with inflationary pressures and other things, it's really important that we try our very best to make sure that we're only putting what is recyclable in that can and raising awareness about what actually is. And I'm still not sure about it. For example, I guess if it has a neck, you can recycle it. But does that include, like, let's just take, I'm just, you know, sorry, this will be my last question. But if it's like a vitamin bottle, you know, the neck isn't... I know like a water bottle has a thin neck, but what about a jar, a peanut butter jar? Is that a neck?
My slogan for this is if you call it anything other than a bottle or a jug, put it in the trash. So if it's a water bottle, a soda bottle, detergent bottle, it's recyclable. If it's a milk jug, an orange juice jug, you know, whatever, that's recyclable. But if you call it a canister, a tub, a cart...
Pill bottle.
A pill bottle. Yeah, none of that. But, you know, if it's a shampoo bottle, if it's a lotion bottle, as long as they're relatively clean, absolutely, you can put those in your recycling cart.
They have to have a narrow neck.
Yes. They used to have a check, what was it? Look for the spout, you know, that type of thing. But everything is a little odd these days. So don't look at the bottom, the little code at the bottom. That's a resin code.
And just one other thing to answer your question. I'm hopeful, as Chair of the Commission, that we will be getting out into the public and talk about recycling. I have no problem talking to a group of one or a group of 101 about recycling. And I can do it for a long time. And I can do it for a lot of groups. And I'm, and because I think that's important to get out there face to face because of just kind of the question you posed. Can I do this? The websites are great, but people just seem to like that personal engagement where I can say, yes, you can recycle this, no, you can, and then other questions that come along. I think we just need to do more of that, you know, with the residual over 40%. We got to do everything we can, just like you indicated, Councilor.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Barbara, Jennifer, and Amelia.
I'll ask the aquarium folks. Isn't this coming Saturday, your e-cycling day? And you have this a couple of times a year. But they really collect a lot of things that day. And it's computer things, but you all do, collect a lot. Does anybody want to say everything that you're going to collect and be collecting Saturday?
Yeah, come on up.
I'm not at the mic, so I know that's a problem. I'll tell you, Barbara, and you can repeat it. So we're going to collect any electronic waste. The police will be there for any prescription drugs that you need to dispose of. And then, of course, we also collect with public works, you know, paints and any of those things that you can't put into your trash cans.
It seems like you all enlarge this every year and try and remember. But they have a long line of folks waiting to get in Saturday morning.
We partner with Goodwill, who's a wonderful partner, and Tidewater, our association, automobiles, also our partner, as well as the police in the city.
But I think having other groups, such as the aquarium, and there will probably be other things during the year who could also sponsor such things to get people interested in doing it and used to doing it. I always forget which day it is, but, see, I remember it for you.
You can always bring it to me, and I'll take care of it.
Okay, all right. But Saturday is a great time to go to, because the aquarium is very much a part of conservation and so forth. It's what they do. So e-cycling this Saturday at the aquarium.
Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the Clean Community Commission and all the members who are here and for giving those tangible examples, like small steps that we can take. Regarding the social media posts, where can the public find those if they want to share or learn more? What are the accounts?
Sure. So it's, I ramble it off, off the top of my head, but it's basically VB Waste MGT. So you can go to Facebook, Twitter. And then we also have Instagram. We also have the Keep Virginia Beach Beautiful page. So that's on Facebook and Instagram as well. And that's spelled straight out, Keep Virginia Beach Beautiful. All the links can be found either on our city's webpage at waste MGT, or VB, Virginia, virginia beach.gov backslash waste MGT. And you can find all the links on there as well. Thank you.
Amelia.
Well, initially, I was trying to get you, but Patrick, but I do have something brief to say. And for the little people, you've got to start at a younger age. It's like trying to teach the old dog new tricks. And, for example, partnering with, like WHRO, you know, they have the poop, the scoop the poop. And they have a low commercial and the singing. And those little people will learn it from that age. Have you all thought about putting something like that together? It's very short.
We actually work with Green Beats through WHRO. We work with Green Beats on the polystyrene van that's coming forward, as well as recycling, litter prevention, that type of stuff. So if they get on there, there's little things, little videos that we put together.
Okay, go back over use less. That little expression you had about buy less, use less. There's something you have in there.
Oh, yeah, sure. It's really, you know, refuse, reduce, and reuse.
Because I like the idea that you go face to face. Not everybody have, you know, opportunity to use the internet or any of that. You're missing a good population. And a lot of them sometimes are in apartments and in different places. They don't have the big yards, but they still accumulate.
Right. And they're still interested in doing these kinds of things.
Right. So going out to the community rec centers, speaking, having someone in the school, like the fire group they have, teaching them how to, you'll see a retired fireman there teaching the little so they'll know what to do starting young. But I think reaching that younger generation have a good impact in the future, even when we're not there.
And trust me, we have kicked around things about getting into the school system with our message, you know, looking at ways to partner with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Because you're absolutely crazy. If you tell those young people things, they go right home and tell their parents, you've got to be doing this, mom and dad. You should be doing this.
See, it's funny, you said kick, like kicking the can. No, we don't want to do that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hill, it was nice to meet you today.
Thank you.
Ms. Stevens, nice to see you again. And thank you both for your service. Ms. Rhines, thanks for your service. Two quick questions. I'd like to, I guess, follow on and reiterate, reemphasize the point that Tom Berluci made about the yard waste in our stormwater system. Just recently, I had an inquiry from our Aragona neighborhood and somebody who had witnessed contractor blowing our debris into the street. And I actually had an opportunity to ask our city manager's office about it. And they're always wonderful. They respond. And they came into code section. And they also described how challenging it is from an enforcement perspective. So unless, and this touches on a lot of the things we've been talking about lately, you know, unless, unless somebody sees it, unless an inspector sees it, we really can't hold these people accountable. So I don't know, I guess I'm looking at our city attorney's office, and maybe even to you as to, you know, I understand there's some legal, there's some practical, there's some just, just overall kind of challenges with that kind of situation. But, I mean, in my mind, if somebody takes a picture of somebody wearing a company uniform, blowing debris into a, into a storm drain, you know, that ought to be enough, or at least a little bit, to go, a little bit to kind of start to go on. So I would just put that to you as a, you know, I'd not necessarily challenge everybody, but I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to maybe try and do better there somehow. And then the other point I'd like to make is the blue recycling cans. And yes, it took me a while to... And yes, it took me a while to, it's like those like paintings where you have to like relax your eyes to see everything, to actually read what is, what is actually prohibited and permissible in those things. They're really hard to read. And I don't know that anybody, you know, who's really just dumping anything in there is going to go up there and read it and say, aha. But maybe some visuals? And again, this isn't for you, but maybe in terms of recommendations for our city to be able to do, you said flip the lid, maybe on the backside of the lid, you know, we get some visuals on some of the, some of the things that are most frequently found in recycling bins that ought not be in there, like pizza boxes and God knows what else. So I would, I'd love to see a little bit more of a visual representation of how we should be recycling as opposed to the, you know, 10-point font on a blue can that nobody's going to read, so.
Hey, Josh.
So just to follow along on what Josh was saying, I had a couple of, how many blue cans are we talking about in the city of Virginia Beach? Do you have any idea? A gazillion?
We have a lot, a lot of containers. I mean, just to give you an idea, we have about 125,000 residential homes, and some of those homes may only have one container, but we have other ones that have two, three, four containers.
Because I was thinking you could help save a lot of arguments between husband and wives, being included, as far as, you know, what goes in and what doesn't, right? And we'll let them decide or know where we're supposed to be putting the right thing, and you can't see the lettering embossed on there and all. So, but I also know that I've had it before where you put the stuff on the outside and it washes, it doesn't stay. So inside the lid is, it sounds like the answer.
Right.
So I guess my final part of the question is, is that that seems to me to be the way to work towards making this better, right? Is that if we can have it on the inside, we can. And I understand, y'all probably know some empirical data that is telling you where the people are sometimes using it as trash, or is it hit or miss? Or is there where we can target? I think one of y'all said we're going to try to do some targeting. And that will be with a sticker inside with exactly what can and can't be recycled?
We're still working through the details on how that education campaign will be run, but the basics is that everybody will know what goes in that container initially in those neighborhoods. And then, and then that way, whenever this crew goes out.
We'll see if there's improvement and move for that.
Right, so we'll be gauging those, we'll be getting that data collected up over several months and have that.
Hey, Sabrina.
So incentives, incentivize. So I'm sure we have some incentives for residents who actually do follow a lot of these practices. And I think we all know what to do. Generally, we do, but it's helpful when there are some incentives involved, because that usually encourages folks to do the right thing. So do we have incentives now that are available for residents who do this and to actually help encourage residents who are not doing it to do it? I think there are several ways that we could incentivize this program and practices like this to benefit the community as a whole. So are there incentives already in place? And if not, is there a way that we could incentivize this process to encourage more participation?
So we had worked years ago on an incentive plan with a company that did this, who might be familiar with, it used to be called Recycling Perks. I had worked with them on that campaign, and what we had found in that incentivizing people to put their carts out, put the right things into that cart, is people would just put the cart out with the wrong things in it, just so they could get the points, because nobody was looking in the container to make sure that they were doing it. What you were looking at was for a higher set out rate as far as, you know, the containers being at the curb, but it wasn't gauging what was correct in that container. The best incentive for anybody is that they're doing the right thing for the right reasons. And that could come from a city, I guess, you know, as far as an education campaign, but in terms of, you know, trying to reward somebody for putting the right items into the container, we don't currently have a plan for that. Definitely look into doing that, but in the past, I've not seen it be very successful in communities.
Thank you for that question. Perhaps, you know, I'll do some research and see if there's a way we can do it, because I, I think that I'm, well, several times I hear from residents, you know, how expensive recycling is and along with that, other waste management services. And so if there's a way we can implement a cost savings to our residents for perhaps participating in a program, that may be more advantageous as compared to what we've done in the past. And certainly always being forward-thinking and looking for new ideas and new ways to help folks do the right thing, because they don't always do the right thing because it's the right thing to do, and, you know, in my experience. But I thank you for your response.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else? I just want to say thank you for your initiatives. This is what part of makes Virginia Beach just a great, wonderful city to live in. And, you know, just to note that, you know, the council, this council did make a substantial commitment to keep the blue cans going. But the one thing I do want to give a shout out to the city, if anybody hasn't seen the operation at the landfill over on Jake Sears Drive, it's really phenomenal, because you could actually bring paper products there, I think oyster shells, you know, you can take gas, oil and other liquids, and then they also divide the metals and things of that nature. And I'll tell you what, it's really quite efficient city operation. The folks that work there are very friendly and, you know, it's very well-used. But hey, we'll look forward to seeing you tonight at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Daney.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we'll be joined by the city auditor, Lyndon Ramirez. He's going to give an overview of the Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science.
Okay, welcome, Lyndon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of the city council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to present the results of the, our aquarium review. Before I get started, while we're pulling up the presentation, I do want to recognize my staff that worked on the audit, Keith Piper, who's manning the controls, and Jackie Scheller, who is with us as well. Also want to thank our president and CEO of the aquarium, Cynthia, that's in the crowd, as well as the foundation members present today, our chair, back for second week in a row, Mr. Dan Peterson, former councilman John Earn, as well as Nancy DeFord. So I want to thank everybody from the aquarium, as well as the foundation for their assistance and cooperation during the audit, okay? All right, so briefly, the purpose and the scope was to review, was focused on the current operating agreement between the aquarium and the foundation. The original agreement was, I believe, drafted in 2012. The last update was 2019, and it was just recently automatically renewed earlier this year, I believe, April of 2024. In regards to the audit, the audit, it was a part of the planned, scheduled review of our city assets. And this was part of the city auditor's audit schedule. So this was a planned audit in fiscal year 23. We did the sports center, the convention center, the Sandler Center. Fiscal year 24, VB National Golf Course. Fiscal year 25, the Virginia Aquarium. And next up is the amphitheater. So this is, was part of a scheduled review of the city assets, okay? Quickly, the, some background admission, the aquarium's mission focusing on education, conservation, research, and tourism. It is a economic engine for the city. All right, the next slide, we were just showing from a financial perspective, the city revenues and the expenditures. The first one that is highlighted was the number that, and that is a budgeted number that was provided by city management earlier. In our reports, we show the actual. There's nothing wrong with showing both budget and actual. So for the three years of '24, '23, and '22, you've got your numbers there. So if you're looking at an actual regard as opposed to budget, for fiscal year 24, the difference between revenue and expenditures was a, expenditures of over revenue of 3.7 million. '23, it was 3 million. And in '22, it's showing a positive 3 million on a slide going forward. We adjust that number because that was the year the aquarium received about 4.4 million in that ARPA money, the shuttered venues grant. Okay, from the foundation side, as we all know, the foundation is, and their board, they do a great job in, number one, supporting the aquarium and its, and its programs. Acquiring, leasing, and otherwise holding real estate, assisting in the identification, acquisition of exhibits, providing financial support, receiving various gifts, and increasing the public knowledge of the marine environment. Okay, in regards to the foundation's revenue and expenditures, their revenue over expenditures, we had '23 and '22 actuals. '24, their auditors are currently auditing, so we're presenting preliminary numbers. But their revenues exceeded expenditures. So preliminary for '24, it's about 827,000. '23, and this is coming straight from their financials, about 468,000. In fiscal year '22, 826,000. And again, these are, these are actual numbers from their audited financials. Okay, table three, you know, there was some discussion on what are the combined costs? So at a higher level, you know, without getting into the actual details, it's simply combining the revenues and the expenses from the respective financials to come up with the combined costs. Okay, and when we're saying combined costs, this is ensuring that no revenue or expense is double counted. It's either going to be on the aquarium's books or the foundation's books. Okay, so if you go to the very bottom, you look at the combined total revenue over total expenditures, combining the two entities, it drops it down to a net expenditures over revenue for '24 of around 2.8 million. In '24, in '23, it was about 2.6 million. And in '22, because of the ARPA grants, it was about 500,000. All right, so those are the, those are the, those are the financials. And when we looked at this, as part of this review, we focused on looking at the operating agreement. Whenever we do an audit, we go straight to the operating agreement, because the operating agreement, it spells out clearly the responsibilities of the various parties. So we use that as our guiding document in regards to what each party was responsible for. And when we look at an agreement, not only do we look at what each party is responsible for, we are looking at the agreement as a whole. And even though each party may be doing what they're responsible for, it's incumbent on us to look at, are there opportunities to clarify things, enhance things, or perhaps do it in a different manner? Okay, so this is just going straight down the, the operating agreement. And when I emailed out the report, I believe I attached a copy of the agreement, just in case you wanted to reference it. All right, so number one, we're just suggesting and include the required right to audit clause in the agreement for every agreement, no matter how big or small. Some of these small groups that come before you asking, you know, for dollar amounts, small dollar amounts, big dollar amounts, all of our contracts have a right to audit clause. And so we're recommending that that should be included. And that does allow us, if necessary, to be able to invoke that if, if we need, if we need documents. Okay, so based off that, as I've mentioned earlier in, in my email, and through discussions with the foundation, and I totally respect their decision, we had some good frank discussions, and they explained to me. So that's just the first recommendation, to include the right to audit clause going forward, okay? And just to be clear, when we looked at this, we're looking at it as it is today, not what a future model may look like, or if it's going to change, what does it look like today? And that's, that's all we can, we can look at. All right, in regards to the second finding, review the distribution of concessions and program revenue and expenditures going directly to the foundation instead of the city. So basically, when we looked at it, we, the city is the owner and the operator of the aquarium. The foundation provides valuable support in regards to time in raising funds, but we're the operators. So when we're looking at it in regards to some of the clarity, we noted all the city is the operator, the agreement requires many operating activities go directly to the foundation. The following revenues and related expenditures, which we would expect to be part of city operations, are going directly to the foundations. So we've got concessions, that includes cafe vending, catering, the adventure parks, souvenir photos, Penny Smash, program revenue, revenue from temporary exhibits, the boat tours, behind-the-scenes tours, et cetera. The only revenue that was split between the foundation and the city is the facility's rental, and the city gets 25%. So in fiscal year '23, that amounted to 25,680. All the other concession and program revenue is being reported through the foundation. Right, item number three, serving in dual roles as the aquarium director and foundation. And Cynthia's been doing this for many, many years, and she has successfully held down both roles, and we all know she's the aquarium's biggest cheerleader. So this isn't directed at Cynthia per se, but from the agreement, it states that the aquarium director will also be the foundation executive director. Okay, so inherently, you're putting the director in two roles, and that increases the risk in fact, or in appearance, of a potential conflict of interest, because you're making decisions on revenues and expenses in operating activities as the, as the director of the aquarium, and you're making some of those same decisions as the executive director, and they could potentially conflict, okay? Item number four, and going straight down through the agreement, the aquarium has three separate accreditations, and they've had three very, very successful accreditations from the AZA, Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the Alliance of Marine Mammals, Parks and Aquariums, and the World Association of Zoos and Aquariums. And I sat down with Cynthia, and she explained the rationale behind this, and I know spoke with the city attorney's office as well, but from an entity... But from an entity, we are the owners and the operator, and we operate the aquarium. Okay? The foundation is the fundraising arm, but the, they, and the city, we pay the insurance and so forth. But the foundation covers all the costs, including the fees for evaluation and preparation. So the actual entity being listed as being accredited is the foundation, when it should be naturally the city. And is that a big deal? You know, what is the impact? Because the foundation receives and owns the accreditation report, access to the report by the city as well as the public is then controlled by the foundation. All right, so we've had some recommendations, simply to, and again, these are recommendations. We don't make decisions, we make recommendations. So I would add the required audit clause that's stated in City Code Section 2-468. Review the distributions of concessions and program revenues and expenditures. Review the pros and cons of the aquarium director and foundation executive directors serving in dual roles. Ensure accreditation of the aquarium is done under the name of the aquarium, and make all the necessary changes to the update to the agreement. So do, and this is the appendix, I'm not going to go through all of them, but as I mentioned, it was last updated in 2019, Appendix 1, and in the PowerPoint, it lists out all the various items that should be updated. There's references to buildings we no longer use, object codes, we no longer use revenue, we no longer collect. There is some contradictory statements in there, and those of you that have read it, I think, have acknowledged that. It states, particularly contradicts where it states the foundation is not subject to the control of the city, but throughout, the agreement requires city manager approval. So we just detail items that we think going forward to update the, I think it would be in everybody's best interest to have that updated and clarified. Okay, finding number two, and this is one that we looked at, and I've heard discussed, and I think everybody recognizes, that the city must work with the state and federal government to seek additional sources of funding. Now, I know there may not be that funding out there, but I think we've got a lot of creative minds and persistent folks out there that if we do and make our case, hopefully we should be able to find other sources. One example is the city has invested about half a million dollars annually in operating the DMAC. I know many of you were, have been out there, marine animal and conservation center. We certainly visited it. It serves three important functions that we, as a city, bear the entire cost for, okay, with the foundation. Rehabilitation center for injured marine animals, crucial acquisition and quarantine space, and it serves as a hub for scientific research and education. Okay? So the dollars we're spending at the DMAC for operating, close to half a million every year, and this is just, you know, this is just one example where we bear all the cost. Okay? And as far as the component of stranding, the stranding response team has a responsibility of over 7,200 miles of the state's coastal shorelines. So that's not Virginia Beach, but that's the entire state's coastal shoreline. I think Mr. Peterson mentioned the foundation and the aquarium, they have a specific license to do that and provide some of the stranding services. The numbers are always up there for marine mammals, stranding response, sea turtle, you know, we mentioned, and we're all about the beach, the whale. Okay, so this is all, when we talk about one of those unfunded mandates that because of the cause, the foundation, along with the city, has taken up. And so the recommendation, simply work with our federal and state legislatures to further augment the city's cost of providing a statewide education, conservation, stranding, and research effort. Okay? And then finding number three, we did have an opportunity, and I thank Mr. Peterson, Ms. Dern, and other members of the foundation for taking time to meet with me and my staff, as well as Cynthia and her staff. We did a survey to the entire aquarium, as well as to the foundation. In the report were just snippets of some of the themes and examples of actual feedback. They're basically centered around three things, morale, short-staffed, can't replace many staff, as some won't take jobs while unsure about future. Okay, there's a human aspect to it, these are our employees, and they feel that. Okay? The physical condition of the facility was the second major theme. From an infrastructure standpoint, the north building is aging, ceilings leak, guests comment on how outdated we are, and we have to take the criticism with little means to fix the situation. Okay? And then the third thing coming from the surveys was communication, and particularly the foundation, they expressed and welcomed the new city council liaisons, but stated that was, has not always been the case. And they've said that has led to some lack of communication and proper understanding, and I know a lot of that communication has been the focus to getting us back on track. So I know everybody appreciates that. All right, and finally, the recommendations we had, obviously, just to address some of the major themes, you know, obviously, the morale that we're hearing from our employees, address concerns about the building, and I know there's plans to do the analysis, and finally, obviously, continue to appoint the liaisons, because I think everybody understands how important that is. Okay? So it's a pretty straightforward review of the agreement. We've tried to provide as much details for cleaning up that agreement moving forward, and I'm very, very confident in talking with the foundation, the board, the leadership at the aquarium, that we're heading on the right track. And I have said in any manner that they want me to be involved with that, I'm more than willing, enable, my staff and I are more than willing and able to help out. So if there's any comments, questions at this time?
Jennifer.
Thank you for the presentation for the report. I find a lot of this quite clarifying, because I heard from some members of the public that there's confusion about what the relationship is with the city and the aquarium and the foundation, when you hear all these words, and are they interchangeable, or are they different, and who does what? So I think this is very helpful in spelling it out, and still it shows that it's confusing what the relationship is. So my question, I'm thinking about the operating agreement, when, do you know when the city and the foundation first entered into?
I believe it was 2012.
How frequently has it been updated or revised?
There was a couple, it's been updated a couple times. The last time was in 2019.
Okay, and what we're looking at now, I guess I'm curious about from 2012 to 2019 to now, has it gotten more muddled or less muddled with the relationship between the city, the aquarium, the foundation?
Because I didn't go back to look at what it was in 2012, in my, this is only my opinion, looking at it as it is, the current agreement that is in place now, it is, I think, most that have read it agree that it is a little muddled. I think it could be easily unmuddled, if that's a word, just by clarifying the roles, because ideally, you do want one organization that runs and operates, and then one that serves as a fundraising arm. I know it's easier said than done, and in this case, I do think it's, you know, probably easier said than done, but I do think going forward in the best interest of all, if those items that were identified are made more clear, inherently, we're going to get away with, get away from, you know, who's doing what and who is responsible for what, and that's what the goal is.
Yeah, I'd love for us to continue this conversation with these recommendations in mind, to clarify all that's very still confusing. So thank you.
Amelia, then Barbara.
I feel the same way, and I did not realize the extent. As you said, there's so many thousands of miles, the state involvement in this. So this is not just one small entity. At first hearing, you know, from the executive director, I was mainly thinking the aquarium, the three buildings and so forth, but this is huge.
Absolutely.
And also, breaking that cycle of having one director answering for both sides is a conflict of interest right there. It's like I am executive director and also being paid for this other part. So that part is a little bit confusing. So we really need, you know, to look in more transparency for what we see. So this is why I can understand, where you mentioned the city manager, some parts is reported to him, yet we have the foundation who says, we own the animals, we own this. We really need all of that broken down enough so that everybody will be, you know, more comfortable with what's going on. To me, this seems kind of rushed. There it is.
Yes, and to be clear, I think Cynthia has done a great job, but that's what the agreement calls for. It's literally spelled out, you're going to have the same person. So that's something to consider, not saying it has to be done, it's obviously has to at least be discussed.
Okay, Barbara.
Well, I think the timing is probably good to have your opinion at the same time we're looking at these other issues, and now we can look at all of it together. And so I think this could just be added on to our intent going forward in the next few months of looking at this whole question of the relationship with the aquarium and the foundation. It's pretty unique, and, but it's been working pretty well, too, for four years. So we have to know why things are being done the way they're being done, is there a better way, and so forth. So I think this can just be, these recommendations can be added to what we're looking at otherwise, and go forward in that fashion. We don't want to react too quickly until, and then we might find that we've undone something that was worthwhile. So I think it's good timing to have this opinion with the other opinions, and we can look at it all together.
Okay, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Mr. Lyndon, you, Councilmember Ross Hammond just mentioned, seemed kind of rushed. Were you asked to move this up forward, or is this in the normal schedule, what it would have been?
No, this is, this is the normal schedule. As I mentioned, this is part of our review of the city assets, and I set the audit scheduled, and based on my opinion, obviously, I think, looking at what we have on the schedule, what is important to me, what is important to the council, based on my opinion. And that's why, as we moved into fiscal year 25, this was the first audit on the schedule.
Thank you. Also, of kind of notice is the assets, and being that you do report to city council, I want to ask something of you, because when I look at, when I look at our assets as our auditor, I would ask when you come back, what I see missing and consistent across all of them is a lack of deferred maintenance. We look at the sports center, we receive an audit, we hire a consultant, we go the opposite way. Audit comes out, it reveals our operators not doing what they're supposed to do, taxpayers on the hook for $4 million. Convention center, we know the losses there. Sandler Center, annual losses of $750,000. You just released a report while we were on recess about Virginia Beach National and some of the challenges there. And then to learn, I mean, you've really laid it out, who owns the building, the grounds, and related facilities, and so within your audit, are there any, are there ever any recommendations? And if not, going forward, can you recommend to city council if you don't see us doing deferred maintenance? Because I was shocked when I learned that we've never done an assessment of the structure, of the condition, and I know we would never do that in our homes. You wouldn't go 25 years, see the roof leaking, see the drywall falling off. If you have a pool, your filter's done, your pump's broken, but you just keep doing the same thing. And in three of these instances, had we listened to either you or the consultants, I mean, this is millions of dollars of deferred maintenance, and it doesn't seem like we've done anything about it, and we are the owners. And so I would just ask, if you see that lacking, please bring it to our.
Yes, absolutely. As part of all the audits, and some of the ones you mentioned, we always look at, what is the CIP, what is deferred maintenance? Are they in the hold? Do they have enough to cover the deferred maintenance? But absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Yeah, of worth, please.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramius, for the report, and I would agree with everyone, I think, on the council here that's spoken about the value of this audit and this report, and in our conversations and discussions moving forward, hopefully with the approval of the ordinance tonight, to do this, to take this course, that we should certainly take these recommendations into account. Move forward.
Thank you. You know, I think we have an opportunity, you know, right now, you know, to improve the relationships that's there, you know, it's an aging structure, we have an aging city right now that has a lot of infrastructure needs. And, but once again, you know, be sure that we are committed, you know, to making this jewel, this facility is a jewel not only for Virginia Beach, but for the Commonwealth and all the people other come. And the idea is that we want to get all in alignment and get the yes, and really take the thing, the facility to the next level. And I think the spirit of cooperation, we have a vote tonight to codify, you know, what we're talking about. But once again, I think, once we all start getting in the same direction and, you know, really get the necessary work done, you know, with the facility, you know, I think we're going to come out as a win-win. Thank you, Lyndon, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, you'll hear from Deputy City Manager Amanda Jarrett. She's going to go over some proposed changes that our VBDA has recommended to city council that I'd like for you all to consider as it relates to your EDIP program.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, City Council, Manager Duhany, and Mr. Stiles. As was mentioned today, I'm here to discuss the economic development investment policy with you, as well as amendments that have been suggested by the Virginia Beach Development Authority. So during this presentation, we'll provide an overview of the existing program, we'll provide an overview of the recommended changes that have been adopted by VBDA, and then we'll seek your direction on next steps. So the Economic Development Investment Program is a resource that VBDA uses to provide discretionary grants to qualifying businesses that are relocating or expanding in the city of Virginia Beach, and to support those projects that will create new jobs and capital investments. The policy was last revised in 2020. There are different components of the policy, and so I'll outline those for you now. Part A is available to new businesses that are locating or existing businesses that are. or existing businesses that are expanding in the city of Virginia Beach. And awards are based on the jobs created or retained, as well as the capital investment. Part B of the program covers development or redevelopment of properties that are located in strategic growth areas, special economic growth areas, economic redevelopment areas, or opportunity zones. These awards are based solely on capital investment. Part C of the program covers the development or redevelopment of properties that are located in APZ 1 or clear zones. And again, these awards are based on capital investment. And then Part D are general provisions that are applicable to the other components of the policy. In February of 2024, the VBDA approved amendments to the policy to allow it to more closely align with the Commonwealth's policy, to adjust the thresholds for job creation, to clarify the required documentation, and to remove Part E of the program, which was associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. Later, in June of 2024, VBDA approved the addition of Part F of the policy that would provide grants in the amount of up to $10,000 to increase access to funding for historically underserved businesses. To delve into these amendments more specifically, in Part A, the capital investment definition was changed more closely aligned with the definition provided by the state, and also gives us the flexibility to match any incentive that may be provided by the Commonwealth. In addition, the cost of the acquisition of land would no longer be provided an incentive unless it was returning land to the tax rolls. It also provided some qualifying definitions related to remote jobs and to contractors. With regards to wage levels, the definition of income levels that we would incent was changed. It would provide $1,000 to an employee that was paid at least 1.2 times the average annual wage, and then $3,000 for a Tier 2 job that would be paid 1.7 times the average annual wage. The average annual wage is provided to us by the Virginia Employment Commission. And as you can see there, a Tier 1 job would be at $69,000, and a Tier 2 job at $98,000. With regards to clarifying the required documentation, funds would, based on capital expenditures, would require the submission of invoices and evidence of payment. It would also require the individual to submit their information from the Virginia Employment Commission, from their quarterly tax report. Funds based on remote worker jobs must also include the title and the salary, as well as their hire date and the zip code of which they perform the remote work. As I mentioned before, it's recommended that Part E of the policy be removed because it was solely associated with the COVID-19 state of emergency. Now, a new addition to the policy is in response to city council's winter retreat and the request that we provide assistance to those businesses that are historically underserved. These would include women-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned, and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. The recommended size of the grant is up to $10,000 per approved business. Available funds for the first rounds would be $150,000, and future funds would be dependent on the performance of the program and direction by VBDA or city council. And the source of the Part F program funds are those that are remaining from the Part E state of emergency that, again, is no longer applicable. So, those businesses that would qualify for this program would be micro businesses with fewer than 25 employees. They must hold a valid Virginia Beach business license and have been operated in the city for at least one year. They must be current on their payment of all local taxes and fees and not been the beneficiary of another grant from VBDA or the city for the past 12 months. The business must also not employ an officer, official, or employee of the city of Virginia Beach, VBDA, and the Minority Business Council. So, the proposed schedule is shown for you here. Based on your direction, we would like to have you consider this at your upcoming voting meeting on September 17th. We'll issue a press release and a series of pre-application workshops. Four would be in-person and four virtual, and then begin to disperse the funds this fall. The selection committee would include four members, a representative from VBDA, the Minority Business Council, the Department of Economic Development, and the City Managers' Office. The selection committee will review the applications and score them based on their eligibility criteria. And they must commit to attending business counseling sessions at the Hive if they are awarded the grant. The VBDA spent a lot of time discussing the permitted use of funds, and you can see those outlined here. They would be able to use the funding for working capital, marketing and advertising, development of an online presence, purchase of equipment or supplies, business expansion, real estate acquisition, or other business development purpose that's approved by VBDA. They would not be allowed to use the funds for payroll, salaries, insurance, lease payments, or any personal expenses. So, the recommendation before you today is that VBDA is requesting that you city council adopt an ordinance approving the amended policy to include the February 2024 amendments that I just previously outlined for you, as well as the addition of the Part F program. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions at this point? Josh?
Very much for the presentation. I happened to watch the VBDA meeting where they were discussing the eligibility of the certain expenses, and I thought it was a really, a great discussion. And I just had a couple of questions. So, the Part E money that is coming in, this 576, 879 of the 2.5 that was unspent, is there, is there a sunset on one that has to be deployed or spent?
There is not. And the plan is to have this recommended Part F program and the $150,000 as a pilot, and then deploy those grants moving forward once we've determined the interest in the program.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schulman. I think the reason why there's no sunset is because that was local money.
Yes.
Yeah, so that was, so you're probably thinking about the COVID or the American Rescue Plan Act money. But that was a local allocation that council provided to VBDA to disperse the businesses prior to the CARES Act money, and the American Rescue Plan Act money came available.
Okay, thank you. And to your point about just engaging interests, and I know there's been discussion around the table previously about marketing efforts. And, and I see the stakeholder engagement includes, you know, our city's website, Hive webpage, Yes, Virginia Beach, and social. And I see it saying here, and thank you for the great work you do at the Hive and our economic development team. Thank you all. And SWAM webpage, Hive Business Resource Partners, Innovate Hampton Roads, NAACP, et cetera. But I just, I'm wondering, I'm hoping that we can kind of take a reflective look after the fact in terms of like how effective that outreach is. And, and I know a lot of times that we, when we try and engage people, we expect them to come to us. And, and, you know, I really think we need to be in the community and talking to these small business owners and find them, meeting them where they're at. And, and just to make sure that, that this, this money is really reaching the people that, that it's intended to reach. And then my last point would be, I know just around the table, and, you know, this isn't for this set of permitted uses or criteria or whatever, but, but we were talking about childcare and the lack of affordability of childcare recently. And, you know, just thinking around how we structure some of these incentives to kind of match what industry and community needs are would be a really good thing to think about going forward. So, if we see companies that provide space in their businesses or stipends for, you know, to somehow make it easier for single moms or, or, you know, to, for people to make it work, you know? And I don't know what, what other, you know, things that we could kind of evaluate along those lines. But, but I think we need to, we need to encourage our businesses. And our businesses are wonderful corporate citizens. But, but if we know what our community needs, maybe a little bit better, maybe we can kind of funnel them into some of the, some of the behavior we really want to see in our, and we know that's needed.
Absolutely.
Chris, and then Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Amanda. Thank you for the presentation. I just have, I know you're asking for some feedback. As a founder of a small business and speaking to a lot of really small business owners, and just one before I came in today, one of their concerns is, is the communication, the effort to get the word out. Because they, whether it's true or not, they feel that by the time they figure it out, that business has been submitted, the money's already been spent or appropriated. As an example, the facade grant at the Oceanfront that we did maybe a year or two ago, a couple of years ago. By the time a lot of businesses understood what was going on, that money was gone. And so, when you look at bringing Amazon, you look at Wawa's expanding pretty quickly in the area. A lot of these truly small businesses, although $10,000 is, appears to be a lot of money. When you look at inflation, as we've been really discussing around this table, there's not much you can do up there. I mean, if you don't have a mobile app now and you need to build one, that's going to cost you several thousand dollars. If you need to buy equipment, and we're seeing all these costs with what we're doing, imagine trying to buy a commercial juicer now or a piece of equipment. So, what I, my recommendation is, I would like to see, instead of a pilot, I mean, you have $576,000. That could potentially impact 57 businesses. And I don't know if anybody's driven around town recently, but we have a lot of small businesses that are actually closing their doors, choosing not to expand in our city. And so, I'm not sure the thinking behind starting really small when we know there is a desire and a demand in our city from small businesses that are saying, "We need help. Rents are escalating. Inflation's high. Consumers are changing the way they spend money. Less disposable income." And so, if we can do more quickly, I would love to see that. But again, I know that's up to the body in general. But I know we're, we see a lot of businesses shuttering their doors every week. Thank you.
So, I want to say thank you for this report. It's always good to see progress on our retreats, especially when we ask for certain things. And I remember asking specifically for this type of program to expand grant funding. And I've had several conversations with Ms. Esan, and not trying to put her on the spot, but she's been a great advocate for our small businesses and our micro businesses. And oftentimes, when I'm working with local business owners, small business owners, they often ask me, "Well, why can't we do more grant funding? We know we have the, you know, the SBA funding and other loan programs, but oftentimes, our smaller businesses and local businesses need grant funding, especially when they're struggling. And it's hard to pay back those, the loans that they take out. And oftentimes, they've already taken out loans, and they just need another support system. And, and for, for most of them, they're saying it's grant funding. So, I appreciate you and the department taking time out to address that need and that concern of the small business owner, to make sure there are, we have increased our portfolio for our small businesses to take part in additional funding that helps them. Because, you know, quite frankly, I, I am certainly focused and concerned in terms of how our local and small businesses are doing since the pandemic. We do need to take a look and revisit to see how they're doing, what their needs are, and ensuring that we are, we're following up with them so they know that we're still there for them. And we know that it's still challenging with times of inflation and interest rates going up. We're still here. We still want to make sure they stay in Virginia Beach. I've talked to some business owners who were, one particular was on their way out of Virginia Beach, which was very concerning for me. But working together, we were able to keep that business owner right here. That business expanded, although it wasn't in my district. But they expanded, I believe it was District, District 8, or maybe it was District 9, I believe District 9. They expanded, and they're still here. And they sing the praises of economic development for helping them and championing their cause. So, that is one success story that I know of, that when we do support our folks and go the extra mile, they will stay. They just have to make, they have to know those programs are available and that we're always there to advocate for them. So, thank you all for doing a phenomenal job for our business owners.
Thank you, worth.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Ms. Jarrett, for the presentation. And as I see this, I'm reminded of last week, Mayor Dyer and Councilwoman Ross Hammond and Ms. Jarrett and some others, and myself attended the World Cup Innovate Hampton Roads, where entrepreneurs, young and old, from around the state competed. It was like a shark tank. You've got to present your idea, your, for a startup company for either one minute or four minutes. And if you, at the end of the time, you were done. So, the ecosystem that we're trying to promote here in the city is three out of four jobs, new jobs created are come from existing businesses, not from new business. So, the more we can do to promote small business, that's where wealth is built. That's where Mythix and some of our existing companies, Drone Up, GTS, a lot of local companies have started in garages. So, I applaud that. But I do want to ask one question about the uses. How do we track that? Because it's going to be difficult to do that. And I'm not going to say we should so much of a police, police on this. At the same time, you can move money around. But I mean, $10,000 is, is a good, you know, it's a small investment. It's not going to break the bank, per se. But the use of the funds was, did get a lot of attention as a development authority. So, I just kind of watch it here, but thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this point? You know, I want to give kudos to staff and especially Economic Development Department because I, I think we've all been to a number of events at the Hive. The Hive has turned out to be a very, very tremendous success. And, you know, once again, you know, Worth brought it up. Drone Up started as a startup company right here on Newtown Road. And now, they have reached national prestige as one of the fastest-growing companies. And, but once again, they had the opportunity, you know, to do that. And, but once again, you know, they had the right help and, you know, getting the small entrepreneur. And when you start a business, you know, it's a tough situation because there's financial aspects, you know, getting, you know, loans and things to get going. You know, it's a maze that, you know, people have to navigate. But once again, kudos to the folks that are, you know, really helping because they're creating revenue sources for us. Yeah, Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, just to get, just to clarify. So, staff's intent is to bring forward an ordinance for council to consider at its next voting meeting, September 17th. So, is that okay for, for staff to bring that forward at the request of the VBDA?
Okay. Everybody, we okay with that, folks? Okay, let's do it. Let's make a good thing better. Amelia?
I just want to mention one last part regarding that startup. We had Drone Up there, and they did a pitch, too, moving what they're doing. But the point was, this happened in Virginia Beach. They could have gone any other eastern region. But they chose us because, number one, our rating for new businesses, and those are important. Just on September 7th, I'll be attending, and Ishan will know this group called Genuine Care, LFC. And they came in with one, like an ambulance service. Father, brother, the phone out that I was the council liaison for NBC. I got a call from North Carolina, "My son is here. How can you help him?" He swam satisfied, so I brought him right to NBC, and it made a difference. They have like four, and this is just last year. Ishan is right still here in that year. So, they're doing a special all-black elegance thing to celebrate in one year to have grown that much. It's because we have almost like a mentorship for this group. And now, they're expanding to include the Hispanic groups because all of these are minority groups that need help.
Absolutely.
So, thanks to the economic development and Jeffrey Smith, Ishan. As a group of them, they really do a great job.
They do a tremendous job. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Carrie Bookhold from our planning department will come and give city council a briefing on the pending planning items that'll come before you at your next voting meetings.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm here to go through a brief overview of the planning items that you will hear this afternoon on your September 3rd hearing, as well as the September 17th hearing. This evening, you have three items for your consideration. All three were deferred from your August 20th hearing. Item number one, to refresh your memory, is a request for conditional rezoning and a subdivision variance request for a property on Virginia Beach Boulevard east of North Fur Avenue in District 4. Oops, sorry. Go back there. The applicant is requesting a conditional rezoning for the parcels totaling .44 acres from B2 community business and R5 residential duplex to a conditional B4 mixed-use district. A subdivision variance is also requested for lot area, lot width, and street line frontage. The property is currently developed with a vacant restaurant building and existing single-family dwelling. The applicant proposes a four-story mixed-use building on the property with retail on the ground floor and eight residential apartments above. While the property is not located within an SGA, it's in about a half-mile gap between the Pembroke and Rosemont SGA. And the site was designed to adhere to the SGA's development design guidelines. The applicant is requesting a deviation to the setbacks to pull the building closer to Virginia Beach Boulevard and closer to North Fur Avenue with a front yard setback proposed at 10 feet and a side yard setback proposed at five feet. There are 26 parking spaces proposed, which will accommodate the retail and residential uses as well as eight bike parking spaces. As mentioned, the applicant is also requesting a subdivision variance to lot width, street line frontage in the area of the parcel. Since the property is used both for residential and commercial uses, the more stringent dimensional requirements are applied. Since you've seen this application last, it's hard to see on the screen, but a fence was added in the buffer area to the south of the property adjacent to residential uses within the Category 4 landscape buffer. The building exterior will consist of a neutral pallet. It is at the tallest point, 44 and a half feet tall, and that's at the front, closest to Virginia Beach Boulevard. The building steps down to 33 and a half feet as you get within 100 feet of the residential district. The four-story building is comprised again of retail on the first floor, which is about 3,100 square feet. The second floors are about 5,400 square feet each, four units on each floor. And the fourth story is 1,700 square feet, which will provide amenity space for the residents, a rec room, and some storage space. At the time of planning commission, we had received one letter of opposition from an adjacent property owner with concerns about how the property values may be impacted. And planning commission did recommend a vote, unanimous vote by 10 to zero for approval of the application. Item number two, again, as a reminder, you saw this a couple of weeks ago, is a request for a conditional use permit for an assembly use at the Pembroke Lake Shopping Center in District Nine. The applicant is proposing to operate an event rental space within a 1,050-square-foot existing building on site. The applicant intends to limit the number of guests to no more than 49 spaces, but the ultimate number would be set at 49 or lower based on the fire marshal or the building officials' review of the application. Per the zoning ordinance, this site is classified as a shopping center with a minimum parking requirement of 44 spaces. However, there are only 35 spaces on this property. Based on this, the applicant submitted a parking study to the zoning administrator, which the zoning administrator approved based on the limited number of hours for this assembly use to ensure that the peak hours did not overlap with the other uses in the center. The proposed hours of operation are 6:00 PM to midnight, Monday through Friday, and noon to midnight, Saturday and Sunday. They are not proposing any exterior changes to the building except for signage. And staff, at the time, a planning commission had not received any opposition to the request. And planning commission voted nine to zero with one abstention to recommend approval. Since the application, I'm sorry, since the planning commission hearing, we've been made aware that the applicant has begun operating this event venue ahead of receiving all of their approvals. Additional information about those incidents was in your package this week.
Sabrina? Sure?
Can I ask you about that last item?
Sure.
So there, if, if the current request for their permit is not approved, did they, well, can they continue to operate as they're operating now? So it, I know they want to extend their use, but it looks like they're an event space. And that's what they were certainly, why they certainly rented the location for events. So if they don't get this approval, will they, can they still legally operate as an event space as they've certainly presented themselves?
If you do not approve their conditional use permit for the assembly use, they would not be able to operate in assembly use or event space within this suite.
And this is an event, the, the business is an event space facility. Is that correct?
This suite has been converted to an event space facility. It's a B2-zoned parcel. So there's a unit within the existing building that could be used as a retail shop or to other things, but it's been converted to an event space.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else at this point?
Josh? Just a really quick follow-on to that. And I, I don't know how long this particular tenant has been operating in this location, but what are they permitted to do there now?
It, it's currently zoned B2. So they could have any of the byright uses that are in the B2 zoning district, which could be an eating and drinking establishment. I'm looking to our zoning administrator, a retail shop. There's certain types of personal services that may be approved within a B2 use. But whenever you start assembling people, you're required to have an assembly use permit. And that's what's proposed here for this event venue.
When does a restaurant turn into an assembly use? I guess, you, you know what I mean? If, because obviously, we want, we want to be able to encourage anybody to, you know, open and have a business in our cities. I, and, and I don't, you know, I, we shouldn't, you know, prevent somebody from lawfully operating. And I'm sensitive to that. At the end, so there've been some recent concerns. So I just, I, I want to, what, where, where is that line between like a, a restaurant where people gather to eat and drink versus a, versus an event venue? And then on top of that, how does alcohol kind of fit into this picture? If, if, if we've not discussed alcohol to this point, if there's an ABC license sought, where does that fit in?
Sure. So it, it comes down to the primary use of the property. If the primary use is used to rent out for events and for assemblage, then it would need the assembly use permit. If the primary use of the property isn't a drinking, eating and drinking establishment where people come and a restaurant, you may have a retirement party. That would be secondary to the eating and drinking establishment. In this case, we have not heard from the applicant whether or not they will be serving alcohol. But again, if they're required to get an ABC license, they'll have to get the proper approvals for all of that requirement.
A restaurant would contemplate a kitchen, making the food on-site as opposed to having it prepared elsewhere.
Right, there would be a commercial kitchen, commercial, commercial hood. All of, they would be a floor plan for eating and drinking for patrons. Correct.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I want to bring some kind of clarity to Councilman Shulman's points because there's lots of small restaurants and small eateries such as ice cream shops or smoothie stores that don't have hood systems, don't have kitchens, but they're serving food. And with the recent change in demographics and the cost of building all that, you actually have a lot of ghost kitchens and people that do food trucks and bring their food. So my concern here is, and I don't want to throw any small businesses under, but I, I was at an event this past weekend at a eatery, and it was a kid's birthday party and you could, the parking was crazy. It was actually in Michael's district. And they are not a event space, but they were jamming with events. And so I think I, some clarity would help because they are not a restaurant. There's no hood system and there are several party rooms. And there were not, there was not enough parking. And so I think I just want to make sure I'm being consistent as I apply what I hear to, to be that if you have a restaurant, you can't really use it as an event space. But I know there's a lot of, of our small business owners that own restaurants and eateries that are having a ton of parties. And I would hate to have to have our manager get some more full-time FTEs to, you know, send them out there to make sure they're in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item number three this evening was the, a conditional use permit request for a car wash facility at the corner of Holland Road and South Plaza Trail in District 10. The applicant is now requesting withdrawal of this application. That carries us forward to September the 17th, where you will have eight planning items on your agenda for consideration. The first item on your agenda will be an ordinance to adopt a new official zoning map. The official zoning map will accommodate a new mapping format used to store the zoning data and produce printed copies. There is, it's important to note that there are no changes to any of the zoning districts. There are no changes to any of the boundaries or the information that is contained on the zoning map. We're strictly changing the format of how the information is displayed. Section 102B3 of the zoning ordinance gives you the authority to adopt a new zoning map. The new zoning map needs to be adopted for two reasons. The first is to facilitate new software. We are upgrading our GIS, ArcGIS software. The second is to make the map compatible with ADA requirements. Here's an example of what the map looks like today and what is proposed. Several improvements have been made to the format to make the information easier to read and distinguish. This new map would also be published as a layer on the VB map online where information will be embedded into each parcel, making it more accessible and easier to find for the citizens. Planning commission did vote 10 to zero to recommend approval of this new map format. Item number two is a subdivision variance in District One. This item was heard at the June 12th planning commission hearing and was recommended approval at that time. However, following the hearing, the planning commission stated they had concerns they weren't able to fully discuss the item and information that was presented at the hearing. So they called a special hearing for July 8th, where they voted to have the application reconsidered. The item was then reheard at the August 14th planning commission hearing, where the planning commission did recommend denial, six to three, with one abstention. This application is requesting a subdivision variance for Lot 15A, which is shown in blue on the screen, of the Bellamy Manor subdivision. Since this parcel and application includes a plat depicting many adjacent parcels, it'll briefly cover the subdivision of the surrounding parcels. More specifically, in this application, the applicant is requesting a subdivision variance for lot width. They're providing zero feet of the required 80-foot lot width and zero feet of the required 64-street line frontage. This section of Bellamy Manor was recorded in 1969, which included the parcels along Rollingwood Arch, known as Lots 9 through 16. A subsequent plat was recorded, which is the plat you're seeing on the screen, in 1979, which included the parcels north, known as Lots 11A through 16A. This 1979 plat included a note, which is highlighted in orange, that Lots 11A through 16A were not residential building sites and were subject to becoming parts of Lots 11, 12, 13, 14, 15R, and 16R since they had frontage. Lot 16A, now shown in pink on the slide, was later re-subdivided in 1986 as part of the Stratford Green subdivision. You can see Autumn Harvest Drive was realigned to include a dogleg curve that gave frontage to Lot 16A. As part of this replating of Lot 16A in 1986, it did not affect or change anything as it relates to Lot 11A through Lot 15A. Between 1996 and 2002, Lots 12A, 13A, and 14A, which are shown in purple, were re-subdivided and consolidated with their prospective adjacent parcels. Lot 11A was never re-subdivided and made part of Lot 11. However, those two parcels remain under current, or under common ownership. The current application applicant is, they acquired both parcels in blue, Lot 15R and 15A in 2007. In 2009, they sold the front parcel, which was Lot 15R, which had a single-family residence on it in 2009, and they retained ownership of Lot 15A. This was a landlocked parcel. Fast forward to 2023, there was a case between the two property owners of Lot 15A and 16A, where the Circuit Court established the location of a 10-foot-wide driveway easement through Lot 16A in order to give access to the property. The court order did only grant access. It did not make the lot a buildable lot, which is why they're here before you. Section 9.3 of the subdivision regulations establishes the specific findings that have to be made before a variance can be granted. And one of them states that a personal or self-inflicted hardship is not considered grounds for the issuance of the variance. Since the need, since the need of the variance is the result of the sale of the property of Lot 15R, and the applicant retained ownership of the other lot, staff and planning commission did not find the criteria to be met for a subdivision variance. Staff has received five letters of opposition from adjacent property owners and 23 signatures of opposition were provided. There were two speakers in opposition at the planning commission hearing. And again, planning commission voted to recommend denial by a vote of six to three with one abstention.
Chris?
I've had several people ask, if you look at our item one, Thalia Plaza, which is requesting the same subdivision variance as section 4.4B, and then you look at this one, which is, the main difference is there's no B2 and R5. Is that the same issue, zero, the, the street line frontage, the width? It's, it's the same in your report? What is the difference?
They're requesting variances to the same sections. The Thalia Plaza, it provides some level of frontage and street line frontage. Again, because they're proposing both types of uses, commercial and residential, they're held to the most stringent dimensional requirement. In this case, they're not providing any street frontage or lot width.
Hey, Josh?
Obviously, a lot of moving parts. And it's possible, I know I would, it definitely benefit from a transcript of the planning commission hearing. And then also the, there was a special meeting, right?
Yes, we will include both the June meeting, the special meeting, and the August 14th meeting in your package.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, item number three for the 17th is a street closure application in District 6, which is to propose just over 6,300 square feet of an unimproved portion of Windsor Road. This street closure application is a little bit different than your typical street closure request wherein the city does not own the underlying fee of the street. Deed records indicate that the applicant is the owner of the underlying fee. And the city has an easement interest for passage on this portion of Windsor Road. It is that easement interest that they are looking to vacate. As you can see on the photo, this portion of Windsor Road has been utilized as the applicant's private driveway at their home at 1217 North Bay Shore Drive since the 1950s. The area contained within the closure would be incorporated into the adjacent property. A viewers' meeting was held on June 3rd and Public Works requested that the city retain a 10-foot section of right-of-way, which is shown in red on the screen, along North Bay Shore Drive, as well as a 20-foot public drainage easement, shown in blue on the northern side of the proposed closure. This easement is needed to accommodate a future drainage improvement for the Broad Bay Oceanfront Stormwater Master Plan. The applicant is agreeable to the city's request, and the viewers found that the proposal does not create any public inconvenience. Two letters of support were submitted to staff, and there was one speaker in opposition at the planning commission hearing who shared concerns about restricting access to the water. Planning commission voted to recommend approval of the application by a 10 to zero vote. Item number four is a conditional use request for a residential kennel in District 2. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to keep up to 12 adult dogs as personal pets to provide a sanctuary for older and disabled dogs. Instead of reducing the number of dogs over time, they do intend to keep up to 12 animals at one time as animals pass away. All animals will be kept indoors except when let outside for exercise and relief. And animals will be monitored when they're outside. We consulted with the Animal Services Bureau, and they did not have any concerns with this application. They also didn't have any calls for service at this address or with any of the individuals that are comprising the LLC. The applicant has spoken with their neighbors and received nine signatures of support and three letters of support, including one from their veterinarian. There is no known opposition to this request, and planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval on their consent agenda. Item number five is a request for commodification of conditions for a nursing home in District 1. The applicant is seeking a modification of conditions related to the site layout, building design, and maximum number of beds for the facility. The previously approved 1996 conditional use permit set the maximum number of beds at 120. And their request now is to increase the number of beds to 124. at 120, and their request now is to increase the number of beds to 124. To accommodate this addition, the fire lane and the parking will be reworked on-site. However, they will re-establish a fire lane, and the parking will be reduced from 98 spaces to 91 spaces, but still exceeding the minimum parking of 56 spaces. The proposed addition will accommodate the construction of private units and new skilled nursing beds, and will use the same exterior design of the existing building. This applicant has received four letters of support, two from adjacent neighbors, one from the adjacent Civic League, and one from the adjacent high school. There's no known opposition to this request, and Planning Commission voted unanimously on their consent agenda to recommend approval. Item number six is a request for conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor specific for permanent makeup in District 8. If you remember, several months ago, we updated the zoning ordinance so that permanent makeup could be part of a full-service salon. Since this application is just for permanent makeup only, they're not offering any other services, the conditional use permit is still required. This use is located within the Little Neck Office Park within an existing suite. The application is for a permanent makeup school. The classes will consist of no more than five students per class, and all students will practice under the direct supervision of a licensed professional. The hours of operation for both the services and classes will be 10:00 AM, excuse me, to 3:30 PM, Monday through Wednesday, and 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. There's no exterior changes proposed to the building or signage. The application was heard at the July Planning Commission hearing and was deferred at that time so that the applicant could correct the location of their public notification sign on-site. So we reheard the item in August 14. There were three letters in opposition, two speakers in opposition at the July hearing noting concerns about how the operator operates her business. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application in August at a 10 to 0 vote. Item number seven is a request for another conditional use permit for a home occupation in District 3. This conditional use permit is for home occupation for gunsmithing in the Magic Hollow Land Use Plan. Home occupation is not listed as a district in this, as a use in this district, so the conditional use permit will amend the land use plan to allow home occupation at this specific address only. There will be no manufacturing, reloading, selling of ammunition or weapons at this site, only selling repair parts for gun stocks when necessary. The applicant also intends to teach gun safety classes. 110 square feet of the residential home will be used for the business, which is compliant with the zoning ordinance that less 20% or less be used or dedicated to the business. The applicant is on track to obtain their federal firearms license, which requires approval of this CUP. The applicant plans to operate on Tuesday and Wednesday evenings from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon, by appointment only, one customer at a time. The applicant obtained eight letters of support, and there's no known opposition. Planning Commission voted 10 to 0 to recommend approval.
Michael?
I have a question about the gun safety classes that are meant to occur there.
Mm-hmm.
Could you go back to the photo of the home?
Sure.
And I'm familiar with that neighborhood, it's reasonably dense, and so I know that, well, I don't know. I'd like to know more about what those classes entail, where they will occur, and what the types of instruction will occur as part of those gun safety classes. Particularly, for example, if it happens in the backyard, even though they have supportive neighbors, could potentially be, or the front yard, potentially be alarming.
Okay.
Neighborhood, maybe. I just would like to have more information about what exactly those types of classes entail.
Sure. We'll get you more information.
Yeah. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just as a quick follow-up, if you go back to the site layout, is that, am I to understand the proposed workspace is in the front yard?
It's in the front of the home. It's not in the front yard.
Okay. All right, thank you.
There's an arrow, it's just hard to see.
All right. Thank you.
All right. The final item, item number eight, is an alternative compliance application for low-speed vehicle storage in District 6. The storage facility will occupy an existing building at the corner of Arctic and 18th Street. The building was previously utilized as the Life Saving Services Building. The facility will house up to 20 low-speed vehicles. No site changes are conditioned as part of this application. Only the storage of vehicles will take place at this location. The vehicles that are rented are delivered to the customers in the resort area. While rental and storage facilities are not consistent with the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan, the applicant has agreed to a five-year expiration of their CUP, I'm sorry, of their alternative compliance approval. Staff feels that the five-year period is aligned with the completion of several major projects that are within the Central Beach area, such as Atlantic Park and significant right-of-way improvements. We received, I believe it was 55, letters of support for this application from the community, and there's no known opposition. Planning Commission voted unanimously on the consent agenda to support and recommend approval of the application. With that, I stand by for any questions.
Any questions? Michael?
I have a comment, and then I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Pocole. On item four, the dog kennel, I look forward to the chance to review more, but I just want to say, as one of the liaisons to the Animal Services Bureau Advisory Board, and having recently gone on a ride-along with our Animal Services Division in visiting the shelter and other shelters, such as the SPCA, one of the most heartbreaking, really, phenomenon that occur are when people actively abandon and surrender their elderly dogs to trade them in for younger dogs and puppies. And it's, it's really heartbreaking. It's a phenomenon that occurs more often than we, many people are even aware, including me, and it just is, is really unbelievable and very sad, and I really commend those individuals who, you know, 12 dogs is a lot, definitely seems like a lot, but anyone who is willing to take care of elderly and disabled animals, particularly after they've been abandoned, very, in a very cruel fashion by their owners or caretakers, is a person that I would, I would like to commend and support. Particularly as a person that, you know, adopted a dog later in my adult life, I just really can't, it's unimaginable to think that, that as they get old and require more care, that they would be abandoned, and I think it's very special and really remarkable and commendable that this individual, this applicant, is seeking to take care of those animals that have been abandoned or, and abused and neglected. So I appreciate that very much. If I could just go off script a little bit, off of the presentation, and if you don't have this information now, you can please get it to me, but I did receive an inquiry from one District 3 resident who has expressed concern about possibly a pending application related to Sugar Plum Bakery, a modification of proffers. One, they flatly asked if this was in any way going to impact the business in a negative way or close the business, and I'm, I, I don't believe that would be the case, but I, I guess that's probably going to planning, right? Is that what?
Correct. It's scheduled for September 11 Planning Commission hearing, and it is Sugar Plum Bakery that is the applicant to expand their business and include a dog bakery in the adjacent building.
Related items.
Right. Dogs all around.
That's good. I, I think that's really good to know, and I, and I wanted to bring that out into the record, just because I, I do think this individual has been very concerned about, about it, and I, I didn't know about the application, but I could not imagine a scenario when the city would be trying to reduce or cause any operational harm to Sugar Plum Bakery, which
Right.
One of the best, if the best bakery in Virginia Beach.
I agree. I agree. Our staff reports should be posted either later today or tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Laura?
On the issue with the dog kennel, I'll be abstaining because we are an adjoining property.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, folks, moving on, liaison reports. Chris?
Okay. Okay, yeah. The public doesn't have the opportunity to see us deliberate the council appointments to boards and commissions, so for the public record, I just, a liaison report, open space, chair has recommended someone for, to replace, for the board for that seat, and in speaking with them today, they'd like us to move forward with that nomination, and I actually sent him an email, because there's a new nomination today from the vice mayor, and he was not aware that that individual was being nominated and had not seen her talent bank, so I just think we should definitely continue to try to respect the chairs as they put in so many volunteer hours.
We'll talk about it in close.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, any council comments? Sabrina?
I just wanted to, to follow up on the comment and conversation about the firefighters and funding for pre-screening for cancer. I did see Max Ganano's follow-up email and the comments that were made, and I took, in terms of attending the funeral, certainly listened to the concerns of, of all those who spoke about the net, the need and how necessary it is to provide funding and to change policy if needed to increase pre-screening for cancer. So when I saw the comment, I took particularly interest into the comment that there is more we can do, and, and that was certainly my concern last week when I, I listened to what we do as a city, and I, and I can appreciate that, but what I'm hearing from firefighters, and especially from Mr. Ganano, as he mentioned, on behalf of the firefighters, we need to sit down and talk about what more we can do to assist them. It's very important, and in terms of the hazards that they face every day, how they put themselves in harm's way, whatever we can do to enhance what we're already doing or to increase opportunities for pre-screening for cancer, I would like to do that, and, and I sent out an email just addressing him and saying, listen, this is a conversation we should probably have, if not before retreat, but especially during the retreat, as we talk about other priorities, I believe this is a priority for everybody sitting around the table, and I'd like to address it during the most opportune time. If that's at the retreat, that's fine, but I do think we need to have further discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just would like to take you back on with Councilman Wooton, I wasn't here, sorry about that, but a little bit is, this is what I've been trying to say since I've been sitting here at times, that, you know, it's nice for us to recognize them and say these things, but when you lose somebody of Master Firefighter Galena's worth and personality and everything else, it does make you contemplate that we're the city of Virginia Beach. We should be, we should be leading the country when it comes to all things public safety as far as taking care of our, our folks, and I know from talking with everybody here, we, we do feel that way, and I, I appreciate that heartfelt support, but sometimes things fall through the cracks, and we gotta, we've gotta stay diligent and do our, our due diligence to make sure that we are leading in protecting the men and women of, of all our public safety ranks. Right now, obviously, the fire service is in the, in the forefront, and we've had two significant cancer deaths and a couple of cardiac events, and, you know, they've been pretty well seen as to where the causes come from, and I would like to say from risk management standpoint, that the risk manager has been wonderful in working with us and getting the gallery tests and, and everything else, et cetera, and I just would ask that you, you come back with a proposal as what that's going to look like for us moving forward to be on the forefront forever, so we don't have to talk about it anymore, as far as what we're doing in Virginia Beach.
Yeah. And Patrick, before my comments on this, could you explain what we've, we've done over the last couple of years?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council previously provided funding for the gallery testing that Councilmember Hutchinson was speaking about as well, and there's still allocation in there that is currently being worked out right now by Risk Management and Fire, and how best to do the next rotation of that. And in speaking with several members of council and seeing the emails that were flown around the council as well, I have asked staff to bring back several options and tiers that we could bring back to council, so council could have a policy discussion on what it would like for us to move forward with as it relates to providing more enhanced pre-screening in line with what, with Max, Max Ganano, the Fire Union President was asking for.
Okay, and, yeah, let me just say that even tonight, we're going to be doing a proclamation on childhood cancer, and, you know, I'll tell you, it was a very sad event, a number of us were, you know, at the funeral the other day, and, you know, we certainly got, you know, the message, and, you know, at a previous, you know, event, you know, I did speak to Michelle Galena, you know, at length, and she is, and we did commit that, you know, we would walk the journey with her to make sure that she, she really wants the testing, and, you know, we are definitely in a position to help. During the funeral, I did speak to, to members of our senate, and they, they asked that we can put something into legislative package, and then I've also been involved, you know, with the Mayors Against Cancer Initiative for a while, and we're going to really try to mobilize all the mayors into 757 and eventually go national. I had a comment, I, I got in touch with our local, Dr. Cynthia Romero, Dr. Bruce Weinstein, and, you know, once again, we're going to, you know, strengthen this because also the local cancer authorities noticed that within certain African-American communities, there is a significantly high incidence of colorectal, prostate, and breast cancer. So once again, the whole theme about early, you know, you know, prevention and screening is a message that we have to get out, but, but once again, you know, we have the duty and obligation to our public safety folks, but, you know, there's a community at large there also that I think we can combine our efforts, and, and then I got in touch with the lobbyist who lobbies Congress, you know, this has got to be a nationwide thing, but I think the emphasis can really start here at present. Thank you.
Okay, Sabrina?
One follow-up. I know you mentioned about the comprehensive plan that you'll be working on, and hopefully we can ensure that we're working with, you know, the key stakeholders to make sure that we're encompassing what they're actually looking for, because sometimes we can say, hey, we're doing this, and this is what we're doing, but what they're saying to us is this is what we need. And what I saw in that email from Mr. Ganano was, hey, listen, we need additional services that detect cancer with ultrasound.
Yeah.
And then we also, they're saying, we also need additional funding that helps them with those out-of-pocket expenses, but then enhanced screening for cardiac screening is going to also help. So as we're putting together that plan, incorporating what they say they need, not just telling them, this is what we've done and we have for you, so that we can actually meet the concerns and the needs of the staff members, and including them in that plan and incorporating and developing it would be a good idea.
Councilman Wooton, that's what I took from the dialogue I had from the, with the members of council and also the email, is that they're supposed to look into how we can enhance beyond what we currently already provide and bring that, I plan to bring that to council, so council can have a policy discussion on how we move forward.
And you would include that information that was listed?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Thank you.
And then we can get these wheels in motion. Okay, anybody, any other?
I just would like to mention that we are addressing, I'm glad Councilman Schulman came with me over Central Business District, looking at homelessness and vacancy or any of that. We had a big meeting, went over two hours, including some of the stakeholders there. Police Chief Nuttergate came, as well as the police and Captain Elliott, so we had a very good meeting and working towards addressing that problem, including the Human Resource Center. We had Pam Shine and Ruth Hill there, so that was a good meeting. It took a long time, but we're looking at trying to improve the situation. It took a long time, but we're looking at trying to improve the situations. And then this morning, I started getting calls from about quarter to nine about the, something in the water, and seemingly there was something out in the Facebook and other places, as though ticket sales were starting right away over this weekend and the first, so several channels called, so I told them, wait, I contacted the groups that's involved with this and reps from the Live Nation, and said they haven't put out anything yet that there will be sometime this week, a lineup, and after that, this ticket sales become, they did not give a date, sometime this week, so just for the public to know, there's no date yet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Josh, did you mention heroes today?
Oh, it was, it was fantastic. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. DeNak Nani and Coastal Edge put on a fourth annual event at Embar Square where we honored our public safety and law professional, law enforcement community heroes, and, and it was fantastic. It was, it was a touch-a-truck theme where a bunch of, you know, kids were out, we had several council members, Mayor, Vice Mayor, you were both there when I was, but I know other, other members of council attended as well, and it, it was, it was, it was very touching just to, just to spend some time with the people who keep us safe and, and let them know how important they are to us, and, and that, that goes from our volunteers to our career, you know, EMS and 911 call center folks, and, and it was just a really, really well-done event, and I was, I was glad to be a part of it. I was happy to see it hosted in District Nine, but, but certainly a citywide thing to just be really proud of, and hats off to Coastal Edge for putting it together.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other council comments? Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we only have one speaker, and that's for Day One, so we can, unless somebody wants that, cool, we can keep that on consent, absolutely, we have one speaker. Anything else on the ordinances and resolutions?
Sabrina?
I'll be abstaining from number three, item three, and I have a, a letter on file to vetify.
Okay, and I have something. I have, I do have something that I will have seen from, oh, ordinance seven, I do have a letter, because I am one of the directors for that, but there's no, a salaries conflict of interest, just to say.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
Are you abstaining or disclosing and voting?
Uh, disclosing.
Okay.
Just disclosing. I've got my letter.
PACC?
No, this is the Hampton Roads, can you see it?
Okay.
Okay, so does that count now that you've disclosed? Or do we have to say it up there?
You don't have to say it in there, the letter resolves it.
Yeah, I have a letter, which has resolved it, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Planning?
Okay, moving on to planning, this, this is for number one.
Can you pull that, please?
Okay, and I'm going to abstain from that item as well. I believe last time we talked about it, the letter was, or my abstention was mentioned, but we didn't vote on it. I will be abstaining for that, from that item as well. After resign a letter, I can do that.
Well, we'll be doing that out front, so.
I have one assigned, yes, yes.
So we'll be, well, that won't be on consent, so you'll, you can vote your abstention.
I will, thank you.
Number two is to withdraw Council Lady Rouse, it's just okay for?
Yeah.
And number three, Councilman Schulman?
It may, maybe the same as last time, where I'm not sure if that, and is here to speak, if she is here to speak, certainly, you know, more than willing to, you know, I'll offer that opportunity for, for sure, so, but I will be moving for a denial.
So do you want to play my ear? And the social comms?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think that's, I'll look, I'll look for in the, in the crowd, and I'll let you know if I see her, and if anybody else wants to talk about it on the dais, that's, that's perfectly fine as well.
Stay tuned on that one. Okay, that's it.
All righty, and here we go. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption of open meeting allowed by Section 2.337-11A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: publicly held properties; discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.337-11A, three, and that's District One, Three, Four, Five, Six, Eight, and then another one, District Six. And then also prospective businesses or industry discussions concerning a prospective business or industry or expanding of the existing businesses or industry where no previous announcements has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community pursuant to Section 2.337-11A5, and that's Project Dust, and there's personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.337-11A1, and that's council appointments for boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All right.
Commissioner Willey?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hachison?
Aye.
Commissioner Rebb?
Aye.
Commissioner Rouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulman?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, we are recessed and closed.